All right, I will call to order the committee, the whole meeting on August 1st, 24th at 6:00. Yeah, it looks like the form hasn't met, but it can be rolled off.
Mr. Quaglione.
Here.
Mr. Craddy.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Bivin.
Here.
Mrs. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here. All right, with that six of us present, we will move on to number two, the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of a United States government and to its citizens for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments so far? Any public comments? We'll leave it number four, vision and adoption of the agenda. Does anybody have any comments or any changes they wish to make to the agenda? Not seen, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quaglione. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the motion passes. And we will send it over to you, Mr. Thompson, for number five, the curriculum instruction committee.
Dr. McCrindall, give us an update, please.
Sure, good evening. Tonight we have two different topics to provide an update on. One is first our recognizing American diversity group, RAD. What RAD is, is it was created a few years ago with the idea of wanting to foster an inclusive, equitable, empathetic community that where students could feel some of the belonging in their identities represented within our Huntley 158 community. And so it began at the high school level and the focus was really on trying to identify underrepresented groups in U.S. history and then aligning those with national recognition months. And since then it has grown into a district-wide initiative. As been shared before, that initial few years was funded by the Community Partnership Grant, which that funding did end at the end of the 23, 24 school year, already put your 24, 25 in my mind, sorry. And so this last school year, we were taking a dive to try to figure out how we could balance and support RAD as we continue to move it forward and begin to look at some of the changes that we could do. As we all know, as we do things, as we learn things, as we grow, there are some changes that are needed to any type of program that we do. So this next school year, we will be providing some budgeting for RAD specifically towards the supplies that we would need to put on events, as well as maybe some supervision at different events as needed to ensure we have safety and we need to do it at any other event. And so we are thinking it's probably going to be around $8,000, which would come from our local budget. We've already pre-budgeted for that within our marketing and innovation budget. But a couple of the changes that we have reflected on are four different main ideas. One is, we want to ensure that we're increasing our student perspective. Currently, we are, there is a RAD student group that is meeting at the high school. It is not a recognized club. We would like to see if that could become a recognized club through the extracurricular committee, but we want to make sure that our student perspective is heard in the events that we're putting forward so that the events that we're putting together are representative of what our students want and need. And so we are going to work with Dr. Bealyn and meeting with his advisory group to help get their voice and on what some of those different needs might be over the course of the Principal Leadership Council, sorry, before we go ahead and finalize what we're doing. So that is definitely a goal that we have. Another goal that we have is trying to increase our partnership with our family groups within Huntley and two specific ones are our IMPACT as well as CEAC, our Special Education Advisory Committee, to partner with them in helping to streamline those efforts so that we're working together collaboratively and it doesn't feel like we're competing or we're not trying to do that because we have some great motivated, dedicated families that want to be a partner in this. And so we're very excited to do some of that work this next school year. With that said, there might need to be some changes to what we put out here because we want to allow their voice in there and we, over summer, just haven't had the time to kind of get all of those different parts in there. So everything that we're presenting right now is a preliminary plan to you. We also have taken a step back and we know that our representation in diversity in Huntley has changed and grown over the last couple of years. And so we wanted to recognize more cultures that are more representative of our Huntley community. And so an idea that the RAD team that had or the committee was to look at World Kindness Month in November and to broaden that, to be more reflective of all different, a lot of different cultures and kind of doing that around the world type of idea. I can also say though, Ms. Jacobson has been meeting with our IMPACT already in the last month and they just sent something with an idea about something at the beginning of December. So we just need to kind of balance that out and we might make a little change there. But that is something we want to do. And then we also know that our Eastern European heritage is something we want to honor and represent as well. And so we did go ahead and add that to our calendar. You will see that we have tried to align our National Heritage and Recognition Month to the months that align with what other organizations typically would recognize that. And as I shared before, we do want to take this back to the students in the Huntley High School Principal Leadership Council before finalizing our calendar to make sure that we're not missing something and that we haven't taken something out of order that they would find to be positive. And so those are some of the changes that we have made and how we're moving forward. This is, you know, a district-operated community engagement type of activity. That's what the RAD really does provide for us and it's our opportunity to really connect with our students and represent them in a positive way.
So.
Questions on that before we go to the next question?
Yeah, so who has traditionally been in charge of RAD as far as the administrative or instructor side of it?
Yeah, it just came from the high school and so it came from two of our department chairs originally where the high school started and kind of built this up and then they have included teachers. There are some teachers and I guess instructional coaches staff representative from a couple of the variety buildings, some of them elementary, some in middle school, high school, but that's kind of who's been meeting that in the past.
And so would those two administrators be involved in this new version of RAD or are you looking to almost have student leaders? Like you were saying, there's unofficial club, so maybe the club could be elevated to official status and then students then could take on those roles with support from administration and stuff.
Yeah, I think we're hopefully a mix of both of those. But we will be able to keep some of the voices because we know we need some people to help lead and put on these events, but also increase enough student involvement too.
One of the things there that did not occur this year, with it being a grant-funded program, some of the, when you're looking at the pay for whether it was supervision or for the planning and all of that, is a little different than when you look at our clubs and our sporting events kinds of things that are outlined in the contract. And so one of the pieces would be to typically the student-run activities, they look for a sponsor.
Sure.
A staff member to do that. They, as Dr. McCrindall said, there are a group of students that are part of this RAD committee. So I would assume that there's going to be students who are going to want to continue on with that and that we would have staff with that. It would go through that either the extracurricular committee, or I'm going to say it a little bit wrong, but we have one more on the curricular side of that co-curricular. And from there, that would come forward as kind of a recommendation moving into next year, what would that pay look like? It would be aligned then with something that would be in the contract. So it would be that combination of student-driven, student voice there, but I believe we have a number of staff members who would want to, you know, continue to support. And then how would we then bring in? One of the things is to put on a lot of these events takes a lot of individuals, right? And that is difficult when you're doing the other jobs that you have and making sure that there's a focus and a balance on that. But if we could, we know that both CEAC and IMPACT are two examples there of groups that were saying, hey, let us partner and come and how to help. And so I think we'd have to iron out and working with the LNI department on how to balance that component. I do believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, we would like to utilize the time to be able to get that to be a committee that would be, whether it be in co-curricular or extracurricular moving forward.
That makes sense. And it's great, you know, looking at one of the handouts here for the activities at the beginning of the school year, and I always remember having my kids in the gym and having all these different clubs and organizations that they could become a part of. And I know it's a little quick to ramp up to that so, you know, rapidly in that short period of time, but I think given some kind of press and PR activity around this opportunity for students to lend their voice and really see what they want this to become and be student-led, I think is an important part for what we're really trying to achieve with this group.
Dr. McCrindall, I don't know how much has looked at this component yet because again, the proposal would need to come forward for that. There are probably some events that may be geared more towards certain age groups of students and some that we would want district-wide and all of that, but I think that would be something that would come through that proposal. You know, if it was centered more with a voice, you know, at the high school or middle school level, how could we make this district-wide? But some events might just be more appropriate for different ages or whatnot. Again, I don't want to speak wholeheartedly on that piece of that. We'd want that to come from the committee and that's part of that proposal. And then when does that fall during the school year? You'll see in here it's expanded. We do try to say school doesn't just shut down in June, but we're really wanting to make sure that we are recognizing American diversity or recognizing diversity in District 158. Summer, we can still have those things, but then how to get that involvement. And so there's some holes, can we say that are filled in the calendar that as Dr. McCrindall was saying, some things could maybe be moved around.
Sure.
So that it's not just the summer, but we would love to engage our families in all that we do year-round if possible.
Any other questions or comments from the committee?
Yeah.
For the rest of the board?
I just have a comment. So if it's a club and it's a district club, then I feel like we need to make all the events district-wide. I don't think having them segregated, as you were saying, that some have more of an impact to high school versus middle school, elementary school. I feel like if we're going to do this as a district effort, which I fully support because our district encompasses a lot of different cultures, I feel like we need to have that focus. And if we want to have clubs that are specific for different groups at the different schools, then we should do that. So if there's, if there is a club at the high school and it's geared more towards older students, then that's where it belongs. But anything as part of this effort has to be a district-wide umbrella because we're funding it that way. And I'm interested, I had some hesitations because there's not a lot of guidance around how it's going to be administered. And I know that this is coming now with the fact that school starts in a few weeks and we've got something on the calendar, I think, starting in September. So I know that we're in a time crunch, but I have a real concern with how we're going to administer this because it seems like people are saying, well, we'll have a committee and we're not sure if it's on the committee and we're not sure exactly how much, how the money's going to be spent. So those are my concerns, which I'm hoping between now and general board meeting might be.
So one of the things, two different components, if it were to be common organizations, say a high school, says, yep, we want to put this in and it's approved that, then it would be a high school club or activity. They may do some things that are district-wide. I think the things that we've done and been able to include district-wide through this have been phenomenal. Maybe it's a Marlowe. This year for sure it's going to be managed and administered through the LNI department and Dr. McCrindall and her team would be the main drivers of that with reaching out for other support from the buildings. I know that Ms. Jacobson has been a key role in this, so you'd be able to speak, would she be the lead? Would that be you? But it would be in that LNI department, at least for this year because it doesn't lie anywhere else in this one.
And I do feel like I would personally like to see the Eastern European Heritage Month moved up in the calendar. I feel like putting it in July doesn't embrace that culture that's so prevalent in our community. Now, we've had a real change in our community and I think putting it in July, unless there's a reason that we're aligning it that way, would make sense to move it up in the calendar so that we can actually give some visibility and really kind of align with the IMPACT, trying to make the cultural significance a little bit better. And I think I made a suggestion, but I would really like us to kick off. I know August is a shorter month with students coming back, but I would really like to see an American month where we celebrate the similarities we all have, being Americans, as opposed to just our differences. So we come to school as Americans and then we start to learn throughout the year all these wonderful differences that make us Americans. So I would like to see an August thing put up, and maybe it's not this August because we're coming into it, but I think it'll be something to reflect on for next year.
Yeah, I can see it through July. I can definitely see it through July on that. And so we want to take this to our IMPACT as well and make sure that we're representing our Eastern European families the way that it should be. But the reason we chose July is there is a Polish statehood holiday in July. And so we were trying to align most of our months to something that would make sense with either national or heritage or cultural month. That's kind of been the way the calendar has been driven in the past. And so that was the why, that they might have a better idea of something that would make sense. And so that's why we were like, this is our tentative plan at this, we just want to make sure that we include the right voices and that we are truly being representative of our students and families in Huntley, where our diversity really is here. About the intent of this is really to celebrate and highlight it and make sure that we're representing them well, all of us.
I got a question. So I was at that IMPACT meeting with, I know with Natalia who ran that, and I know she was, when I was reading this proposal that she had or this information page, I found it hard to believe that she would pick, not that used to have said this, but July when we're not even at school. So I know you're speaking to that.
Yeah.
So I'm just like going, oh wow, that's really interesting because it was really heavy-hearted, the conversation when I was there, it's like, wow, they need to be represented at all costs, I mean, just like everything else. And so I was just wondering, as far as being, this isn't recognized as a club, is that what you're saying?
Currently it's not in our, because the way our club activities run is it's through our contract and so there's a process that teachers would go through a trial period of a club, they go through, it gets approved through either the extracurricular committee or a new part of our contract, Mr. Altmyer or Co-Curricular, I believe, fund or curricular fund. And so there is a process that has to follow some timelines in order to then be recognized as an official, you know, club within our contract with pay and all that.
What was it considered before we had this grant that funded everything and it didn't matter what lane it was in per se?
Yeah.
It didn't exist.
It's been two years?
Yeah. It was three, it was three years, uh-huh, it was three years and it was just like a student engagement type of activity.
Similar to a club, so right?
Correct. And so we want, we want to make this be a part of who we are because we agree, we just want all the right processes and make sure our cross narrows, using that in our eyes doing it correctly.
Because like to Dana's point, I was like, this gets, you know, prime real estate on our website, this club, that everybody thinks is a club, whether the semantics maybe don't align, and we're talking about announce, that's good, but I'm just thinking, how does, you know, as far as, you know, what, who pays for it, the budget for it, it's just like what other club gets similar fashion, which I've asked before and I know you're explaining to us, so I'm really thankful for that. So, but.
One of the things, I know getting that student voice and the staff voice in the school year to hire now and finalize what our calendar would be, one of the things that I'm hearing is that to keep them all in during the school year. And so I think that could be something as you are gathering that with that, to how do we move these things so that we are making sure that students are in session during these times and getting feedback from that.
And as far as the calendar we go by, can't we just go by a Huntley calendar? We create that since it's our district?
Yes.
Oh, sure. I mean, as far as, I know we're.
The actual month.
Dead in the past, I mean, we can just figure out whatever we want. We don't have to go by what, by a detail.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Lots of good ideas. I could see even months being split between, you know, two different celebrations or recognitions. Anyone else?
I think one of the other things too, this is just one way of making sure that we are recognizing and helping students to feel welcome, to feel accepted. This should go across everything that we do, our curriculum, our other, whether it's communication and making sure things are translated, all of the things, this is just one piece that somewhere students and families from across the district could come together, build awareness and do celebration. And so absolutely, I think that, again, just that's one piece of that. There's, when we're looking through any of our reviews, we want to make sure this cuts across all aspects for that.
One other question, real quick, I forgot to mention. As far as I saw, the input is from the Principal Leadership Council. Is that because it's originated at high school? I mean, would we get feedback as far as like anybody else?
Yeah, we did have it. So right now there's an established group that Dr. Bealyn has of about 60, 70 students, which is representative of many clubs and activities and different, you know, support, student council, RAD, et cetera, students in there. And so we were hoping we could tap into that group because they have so many, you know, interests out in music and all the different things we have our good representative population to talk to. To your point though, I mean, we could definitely look at how do we get them input from middle schools and elementary students and kind of feel there.
They do that for the other clubs, so correct? That's the council, that unit of.
That council is.
For other clubs too, or is it specifically that?
It's an advisory group for, you know, Dr. Bealyn to hear what's going on and we just thought we could tap into that group to get some input on this specific one because we want to make sure that we are doing something that students actually feel like they want to be represented and it's not just adults or us saying this is what we think that you would like to be represented as.
So others' buildings would be represented, like voices at those too?
Yeah, we could do that. Good point.
Thanks.
Anything else? All right, part two, start of the year preparations.
All right. So we've had a very busy time over in the curriculum department as well as throughout our buildings. We have had a lot of great work with Mrs. Moen with our elementary literacy as they're working towards implementing benchmark in our year one of our rollout with that, with those materials. Our secondary literacy and math, Mr. Truax, our department chairman, Mr. Tauski at the high school have been doing some work with the 612 professional learning with our English teachers. They were here just last week, Monday and Tuesday, learning about some literacy specific trainings and they were all over at Heinemann, actually. Secondary math has been doing some work as well in trying to understand the standards and content standards and what they are actually measuring. What are, when we're giving an assessment, what is the ACP actually going to ask us to do with it so that we can dig in deeper and make sure that we're teaching our practices in a way that is aligned to how students will be assessed? And some work has been being done on that, I guess, shift transition to from SAP to ACP as well. Ms. Jacobson has been working with dual language in our multilingual curriculum teams. They came in last week, did some training with Adelante, our new curriculum that will give them a foundation of what to teach in their classrooms, as well as our EL teachers with Benchmark Hello for our newcomers, which we're very excited to have a resource to help as our newcomer population is growing. It's very important for us to have something that we can support our newcomers with. Dr. Hoiu and Mrs. Spears have been working with our interventions team, they're facilitators and making some decision-making rules. We like to follow rules on here's some data, what do I do next and establishing those so that we are making sure that the support that we provide students are systematic across different buildings and different areas. And then we also have for the last, I want to say five years, we've been offering Huntley University courses. These are internal courses that are designed by. that are designed by either administrators, our instructional coaches, some teachers have created some of these that our staff can take throughout the summer of their own. And they get CPDU credit, sometimes some salary schedule change, which is great for us to be able to incentivize and keep our staff, you know, here in Huntley as well. And they've been taking some topics on literacy, math, AI, college and career readiness. There's a lot of different opportunities there. So it's in a very busy summer, but we are excited to start to welcome back our students in the next couple of weeks. We're just going to give you a little highlight of some of the things going on.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. McCrindall.
All right, Ms. Wylie.
Hey.
Special education.
Oh. I am going to have Mrs. Gill provide some highlights.
Similarly to Dr. McCrindall, the special education teams are working alongside the curriculum instruction to learn about our tier one curriculum. And then also we're engaging in some exciting professional development to really support some of the specialized services across the district. So one thing that is exciting at the high school in particular, we're moving to something called a case management model where we have staff in the special education department who will be either teaching or teaching and case managing. So their teaching caseload is three classes and the rest of their day is dedicated to case management, which will give them some pretty specific opportunity to work with families more directly, teachers more directly, and, and really focus on case management. So we're excited to offer some ID boot camp opportunities or really think about how we're writing IDPs to capture the work we're doing. And that's exciting, that's happening. At the same time, we're working specifically at the high school to talk with our teachers in our elective classes as well as our case managers who are supporting our students in elective classes on how we do meaningful inclusion well, how we accommodate and brand modifications for those students. So those are some exciting professional development opportunities for our folks at the high school and, and for those who are case managing. We're also doing some specific work around unique as we've talked about in the past and circle of courage, which are some frameworks we'll use to help support some of our students in our more specialized programming. So just some very exciting things. I wanted to, again, share, this is all a response to staff feedback and input around what they're needing and what we know will help them do the work we're asking them to do. So I'm just sure that I'll take.
Any questions? Any questions?
Thank you.
I have one question. On the case management, which sounds really interesting, actually. So is part of the goal there to have better parents' engagement?
Yeah.
The process of basically, you've got someone you know who to call, a single point.
Yeah. So we've always had case managers where there's a single point of contact, but we've had so many case managers. So the idea is to make sure that case management is pretty specialized. So we will have eight case managers at the high school, six dedicated to students who are outside of our special program. But yeah, it's so that we are good at capturing the personalized and individualized plans that we're working with students. Yes, there should be contact with family, but that piece shouldn't change. It should just be that there's more specialized case management. If I'm a case manager, my role is also learning about how to case manage well and facilitate IDP.
So do it again, over and over and over again, what it is.
So they'll have a larger caseload, but they're really responsible. It opens up their schedule so that they can, you know, go into classrooms and observe, for example, in elective classes and see how students are doing or connect with teachers more regularly. So, you know, the idea is to really dedicate case management time to those, you know, those few people instead of having all of your teachers teach and case manage all the time. Case management takes a lot of time. And, and so if you can dedicate, you know, group to, to doing that work, they get better at the work because you're then training, you know, a specific group of people to manage.
And would you see this moving down to the middle school and the elementary schools? Or is it particularly well-suited for the high school because of the large enrollment and you can manage that a little bit?
It's a great question. It is particularly well-suited for the high school. However, I do think there are opportunities at middle school for sure. Elementary is, is trickier, but I'm, I'm open to it. And I think that's something that we want to explore in these coming years. Starting at the high school makes a lot of sense for us, but I definitely am open to hearing how it goes at the high school and how it could work both at, I mean, from anywhere from early childhood all the way through transition.
It makes a lot of sense. I look forward to seeing the results.
Thanks.
Do you want to add?
Hey, finance committee. First item is we have our purchase orders, impressed checks, accounts payable and disbursements listed. Is there any questions, committee or two?
That's right.
Any, anybody else in the board have any specific questions related to those items? If not, we'll go forward to the board meeting for consent. Seven to do is monthly fiscal update. Mr. Altmyer.
Thank you very much. Before I jump into a few fiscal updates, I do want to recognize a few things. And one of them is welcoming Mr. Kevin Lindquist to the table.
Yeah.
It's a big day for Kevin Lindquist here. He is up following, following me here. And I also do want to recognize and, and notice how, how relaxed Mr. Doug Grandkasse looks in the back of the room. I looked over there and I'm like, wow, he does look like he's retired already. So, yeah, he's still with us for a few months. So, but we do have Kevin at the table. So I wanted to welcome, welcome him. Within the fiscal update, there's two items I do want to talk about. The first item is the tender offering. The subsequent to this memo being published, this is not part of the memo, but we all know we issued a parameters resolution for a tender offering. And earlier in the week, I did, unfortunately, now you know where I'm going with this, we did hear back from PMA and Mezaro, our underwriter, who attempted to reach out to as many bondholders as they could locate and find. And that was, that was very challenging because we've got a lot of really small bondholders, unfortunately. And the bondholders that they were able to get in touch with didn't yield, yield the answers they were looking for to really make it worth our while to continue to move forward. Because if we do a tender offering, right, there's underwriting fees, there's the fees for an S and P rating, there's a lot of fees that we would need to overcome to yield savings, material savings to make it worthwhile to go through the process. So at this time, they didn't like telling me that, but unfortunately, they're pushing the pause button for now because they don't feel like it's worth it. So I just wanted to update the board on that. We still have that parameters resolution out there. So if anything changes, and they'll continue to kind of poke and prod, make this thing work if they can, we do still have that out there and I'll continue to keep the board apprised if anything changes. So that is the tender offering update. That's not so good of news, but I do want to talk about the Illinois EPA Volkswagen grant opportunity. If you recall, two weeks ago, we talked about that opportunity. And a few days before that board meeting, I'm not sure if it was a Monday or Tuesday, but I pushed the button on that application. So we completed that application. We talked about it at that board meeting. And the day after the board meeting, well, I received, we received a NOSA. A NOSA is a notice of state award. And we were awarded within three or four business days of submitting that grant, the recognition of we, we will receive that grant. And so the process right now is the state, is being, the Illinois EPA is putting together grant agreements and wants to get those grant agreements outlining everything that was in the grant application for those four electric buses and the related charging facilities. There will be a grant agreement for which I bring forward to the board for approval. This is, you know, I'm, I'm giving that update in advance of the display draft. So within the display draft of the budget, and we'll talk about that, talk about that in the next line item, that does reflect one very large adjustment, and that is the reduction of capital spend from 1.1 million dollars to approximately $400,000. And we did that while we need six, six buses for next year. We anticipate two of those buses to be from the Renew America Grant, electric buses from the Renew America Grant, for which those federal funds are covering 95% of the cost of an electric bus. So an electric bus at that rate is a little over $10,000, $15,000 per bus. With this grant, this grant covers 75% of an electric bus, that's $354,000. That's approximately $85,000. And as we talked about at the last meeting, today's rate of a going diesel bus or propane bus is in the range of $160,000 to $170,000. So there are some significant savings to be had by utilizing this grant and purchasing a bus for $85,000. And, and the other point I want to make is with a propane bus, while we have to, we have to pay for that fuel on an annual basis with the infrastructure we have today, obviously we recognize that while we have free fuel for the next 10 or 15 years for each electric bus. So those are additional savings that we can have. And the one additional piece also that would come down the line is when we do purchase and receive these six electric buses, we will be eligible for an additional, under the IRA, Inflationary Reduction Act, and I'm going through that process right now, an additional $40,000 per electric bus. So those are additional savings that will further reduce the cost of that $85,000. So did want to make the board aware of that good news. And as a result, it did change the budget, so display draft budget in the next bullet point. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have on anything within the fiscal memo.
So on, on the electric buses, we, we had four existing already?
Correct.
And this is going to give us six more?
And this would give us six more under two different grants. And we're still waiting, right, we're still waiting for the go-ahead on the Renew America Grant, that we can go ahead and issue POs to go ahead and solicit that reimbursement from the federal Department of Energy from the federal side.
Charging infrastructure handles 10 or 12?
12.
Okay.
Now, the infrastructure handles 12 slots. We will still have to obviously obtain the additional chargers that we need for both grants under Renew America Grant as well as this Volkswagen includes the percentage cost of coverage to, to put those chargers in place. So good news on that front.
Yeah. I mean, there's just one other quick follow-up. And so how did it, you know, how was the first year of using those four electric buses?
Um, it's my understanding, I'm, I'm going to ask Mr. Zaire for a little input as well. Pretty well, I mean, but I'll, I'll hand it off to Mr. Zaire who has a lot more input.
Throughout the year, we stretched them a little bit more. Ran into a little bit of issues when it got a little chilly out, just because of the placement of the heater towards the front of the bus. So I know we're looking to make those corrections as we move forward, but we, we make sure they're designed for routes that aren't the super long haul, but they're local. But for the most part, you know, anything that we ran into was covered under warranty, just like with any equipment that you're going to get like that, you're going to have some glitches. But they were able to get things fixed in a timely manner. So there's special training that goes with these buses because you have a heavy foot.
Single move.
It, it trains a little bit quicker. So our, our, our bus drivers do get trained with that. And I know Mr. Grandkasse and the super, get that set up for them. So it's pretty, pretty good for the most part. And we had a pretty successful time with the four buses.
And we're addressing the, the heat element by going with a Lion manufactured bus. Currently, the, the Bluebird buses we have, heat is generated off the batteries. And when heat is generated off the batteries, it does significantly drain. And based on where the heating element is and the heater is in those Bluebird buses in the back of the bus, or the front of the bus, excuse me, portions of that bus do not warm up as easily or like they should. The Lion manufactured bus is actually, the, the heat is generated from a diesel, from diesel power. And it does drain the battery and it's more equally distributed throughout the bus. So we're really happy. We've actually went up to the Lion manufacturing facilities, saw the Lion manufacturing facilities, understand the benefits of utilizing that bus versus the Bluebird. And that would be the direction we're going to go in the future for sure.
And Mr. Altmyer, well, we have the additional two spaces right now. We feel that at this point, this would probably, for the time being, be the last grant that we would go for, for those components because we do have a few other vehicles that we could use those spaces for. And based on routing and distance and all of that, we feel comfortable with the 10 and then a whole lot of anything.
Correct, correct. We absolutely feel like the mix that we would have between propane, diesel, and certainly now electric would be a good mix for quite a while. You know, until, until the world completely changes, you know, 10 years down the road, there will be no recommendations coming. For me, and I will not be soliciting and looking for any more federal grants on electric buses because frankly, to add another infrastructure, a larger infrastructure would be a massive task.
Based on what we're being able to receive, if you will see it just a little bit as a great budget savings there and impact, where we can utilize those dollars elsewhere.
So I'll, I'll do a supine on this because everybody knows I've had a lot of discussions about the electric buses. And what everybody probably doesn't know is that I actually do drive a Tesla and I work in the electric vehicle business, right, with what I do with work. But I know a bit about this market. So the concern, and I'm just going to highlight it, it's not going to change anything we're doing. The concern has always been, they set the price at $350,000 for a bus and that's not going to come down. And we're seeing it in real time because you're seeing natural gas buses go up by 50% and the diesel buses go up by 50%. This is the effect of a free money public policy that's coming. They're giving all this money for these electric buses and it's driving the price of the other buses up. So this was a concern I had from the get-go. This is where we need to be cautious about this because $350,000 for a bus, it doesn't make sense. And, and that's what we're paying. But it's coming from free money. So again, it's, it's nothing that's going to change what we're doing here, but that is the public policy concern.
Yeah. I had a question about the bonds. Is it a, is it a matter of the bondholders don't want to relinquish their bonds or is it just the cost of refinancing?
No, I think it's a combination of both. It's identifying and finding bondholders that are willing to do the tender offering. Some bondholders like to hold their bonds until maturity. They don't want to go through the process. And there's no guarantee, you know, no bondholder will say, yes, I will absolutely definitively go through the process because that's not really how the tender offering works.
Right.
Right? It's a, would you be interested if we do a tender offering, if we do a tender offering, would you be interested to go through this process? And usually they're, they're, you know, on the fence, but they usually lean one way or the other. They were not finding a lot of bondholders that were willing to go through that process because many of the bondholders like to hold the bonds.
Sure. And more private.
They're small and they're just holding them till maturity and coming out.
If, if it was a, a major house that was holding a, a large percentage of those.
That is looking to move.
It changes the.
And generate more profitability.
Yeah.
Yes. But we, we found that we do not have a lot of those within that, within those tranches of tier 22 debt.
Thank you. Anything further on your monthly fiscal update?
Nothing further.
Okay. Was there anything else anybody wanted to throw in there on that? Okay. Move on. Give our activity reports, activity funds report. Nobody have any questions concerning that? So then we can move on to our fiscal year budget, display draft.
Thank you very much. This would, this is going to be relatively quick in that the display budget, I'm very pleased to present the display draft of the budget. It will be on display starting August 5th at the front desk. But one thing is for sure, right, generally the month of August, we receive a lot of information from the state of Illinois. The EBS calculation comes out, the transportation reimbursement comes out. We get final numbers on a lot of the different other categorical reimbursements such as private facility and whatnot from the state. We've yet to receive that information, but we will over the next several weeks. So over the, usually over the course of the month, that's when a lot of the material adjustments will happen and there's, there's no change in that. But well, what I do will note is if, if we do make a lot of those changes in the next week or so, and I'm anticipating and hoping that we will, I will bring a revised display draft. And we always revise the one that we put up front as well to closely approximate what we're going to pass moving forward. We'll put that and exchange that on display for the final two weeks. One thing is for sure is the budget hearing has been approved for the first week of September at the September Cal. There'll be a special meeting for which the board will, we will ask the board to approve the final FY '25 budget. But there's still a lot of budget adjustments coming down the pipeline, one of them being is health insurance. And I think Mr. Zaire made. down the pipeline, one of them being is health insurance, and I think Mr. Zier may talk a little bit about the renewal coming up in his FSR update. If he doesn't, well, we're getting that soon, and hopefully with that information, if we need to also tweak the health insurance number, we'll do that as well. So within the display draft of the budget, there was really only two material adjustments since the last tentative draft for which we talked quite a bit about, and that is an increase in revenue for the STEP grant for special education of fifty thousand dollars and the seven hundred thousand dollar reduction in the capital purchase line item for bus purchases, right? Going a little deeper on that line item, if we didn't have the opportunities we have today on the electric buses from Renew America or the BW grant, if we needed six buses at a hundred and sixty or a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, well, that's the one point one million, right? So really, by having these opportunities, and I understand your point, Mr. Britman, completely, by having these opportunities within the FY twenty-five budget, from a capital expenditure standpoint, there is a reduction and/or savings of seven hundred thousand dollars. So that has also been reflected in this, in this display draft. Currently, the operating surplus is sitting at two point two five seven million, and that is up approximately seven, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from what you previously saw in June with the tentative budget of one point five of one million dollars. So we'll continue to keep the board apprised, and if there is an update to be had, two weeks on the road at the board meeting, I will absolutely bring a revised display budget for your review at that meeting as well. An update. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
The farmer rebate recapture and the cap insurance, is that in last year's or this year's?
That would be an FY twenty-four adjustment, so that, those are gonna, that's the FY twenty-four health insurance numbers, which will get us closer to the budget on that health insurance line.
We're gonna be over budgeted.
Yeah, we'll still probably be a little over budget. We're gonna be really close, but it's gonna, it's gonna really bring that number down significantly.
Because we ultimately ended up with a surplus overall for FY twenty-four.
Right, we should, but we're still booking all of our final journal entries. So the reason you're not seeing a revenue in expenditure report, and generally, you don't the first week of August, is because we're still preparing for the auditor, making those adjustments, and we should, we should be able to give you an update at the board meeting of where we think it's gonna end up for the year, and provide a health insurance, specific health insurance line item update as well.
Right, right, but to answer your question, though, you did, taking that into consideration, you took the rebate stuff and how it's gonna continue on into this next year's budget, you've adjusted health costs.
Well, health costs moving forward, right, still currently reflect what we feel based on claims and trended claim data, what we feel it should be. It might have to be more, right? The benefit, you know, the farmer rebate, the Blue Cross Blue Shield rebates that we've received were really from plan year twenty-three, right? So plan year twenty-four numbers, fiscal year twenty-four numbers, the claim data, is accurate, right? And so what we're budgeting in FY twenty-five is based on actual fixed costs by Blue Cross Blue Shield and trended estimated claim data based on what we're seeing in FY twenty-four. The renewal, when we receive the renewal, you know, they have actuaries, Blue Cross Blue Shield has actuaries based on the experience, based on the HFR numbers, based on what we're seeing in the plan, based on those with large claimants, with some serious issues, you know, they look at, is this, is this a lifelong issue? Is this, is this a one-time issue? Is this a one-year, six-month issue? And based on all of that actuarial data, claim data, they estimate what they think, right, claims will be in the next plan year. So utilizing that information, we'll be able to gauge whether or not our estimate, or not our estimated increase is enough. Will it be perfect? No, unfortunately, because there is, the plan year and the fiscal year are not aligned. They're six months apart, so we have to do best we can to estimate that budget.
Okay, anything else to highlight?
That would be it.
Good. Anybody have any further for now? Paul, you have anything?
Thank you.
We're done with me.
We'll move to Mr. Craig, who made an entry just a second after his.
Just in time. All right, eight point one, monthly human resource update, Dr. Zier.
And just a bullet point here with human resources, as we're getting ready, we turn to August and racing for our August surprises, unfortunately, and our hiring manager is working very hard across the district in human resources to make sure we are staffed appropriately as we go into the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and get some other items off the ground as we look to hire subs, some to make sure we're fully staffed for that. Also, as Mr. Altman mentioned, working with Alliance, some to get those renewals out. We'll get more information on that next week and have a more thorough book of what that's gonna look like moving forward. So we're scheduling that meeting very shortly. There's an agenda linked in here, and we wanna take a look at it, do link on that, to take you up to the people doc. I just wanted to give the board an overview of what the district kind of looks like when next Thursday is. So Thursday over Heinemann, we'll be welcoming the new staff, provide them breakfast. Lombard will introduce our administrative team to all the new staff, and we will also get to know the new staff a little bit and hand out swag to the new staff, so make them feel very welcome, and then curriculum has some activities planned for them for the rest of that day, and then that Friday, so we can hopefully get some of those individuals acclimated to their buildings and their mentors, and get us geared up for the official first day of all staff returning that following Monday. So if you scroll down a little bit further, what you're seeing is an overview of the first two institute days and what that'll look like. The buildings have much more detailed agendas that are out there of what the activities that will be going on, and then we'll welcome the staff on that following Wednesday. So I'm very excited about that as we move over here. Any questions, human resources?
Any questions, Dr. Zier? All right, moving over to number nine, building the ground.
Mr. Troy.
Thank you. Mr. Lindquist, hello, sir.
Good evening.
I'm going to apologize in advance. If I call you Doug or Mr. Rinkowski once or twice, please don't take it personally.
Don't worry. I'd actually like to take a second to thank Rinkowski for making this transition, this seat a little easier with him still around. He's been a lot of help.
Nice to see him smile now.
Yeah, he's ready for retirement.
Look at your cat back there. All right, with all that fun aside.
On on updates, a few items here I'd like to point out, the Marlowe DX cooling system, that was FY twenty-four, is now a hundred percent complete, and the numbers and estimated numbers have been ran that we are potentially gonna save fifty-two thousand dollars a year if we had a project on that. The high school roof restoration now, final phase, thankfully, is now complete. The punch list to walk through is set for August seventh. Take care of that. Throwing on my desk late this afternoon is the final change order for the wet insulation that was pulled up on the roof with the approval of the board. I'd like to bring this to the next board meeting on the eight fifteen approval.
Yep.
A few more items on the on and updates, the asphalt field coating crack fill is complete at Marlowe and Martin as well. The carpet at Leggie and Cheswick is now completed, hard to set, cleaning is in progress, looks amazing, they did a great job. That's it for the on and updates, any questions on that?
Thank you very much. Any questions from the committee or the board?
I have a question. The field, the athletic field, when does that do, is it like year thirty-one? Is that what it is?
That's in the next, the next report that I have here.
Okay, I'll wait.
That's a great, that's a great.
Good segue.
It is protected FY twenty-nine, but every year we do two visit maintenance on it. A company comes in, inspects it, drives the field for anything, and it's filled in. We do one G max test on it. A G max test, we take a twenty-pound weight, you drop it from two to three feet off the ground, and you get a rating, called a G max rating, and the rating should be no higher than two hundred. Our field average is at one fifty-eight right now.
What's it normally?
The safety test.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
Do we ever freshen it up with paint or are you doing that?
We do. We do freshen it up.
Like at the same time as the turf?
Usually before a season starts, whether it's lacrosse or whether it's football. We was using it at the time, requested by the athletic director.
When was the last time we did that?
I reckon it's in the summer, they did it.
They did this though?
Yeah.
Oh.
Few lines have been refreshed, whether it's the whole field, I don't think, so I think they just set a few lines here and there as needed.
Okay.
Thank you, great question.
Sure.
Any questions on the on and updates?
Not hearing any. Keep moving forward.
Sure. For over twenty years, the administration has been presenting to the Board of Education with the reports of our ten-year view of large-scale lifecycle replacement projects, which the administration recommends to the Board of Education, consider to preserve physical plans of the infrastructure. If you'd like to join me on page two of this report, and column one is the most updated appraised value of our building at just under two hundred and seventeen million dollars. This was dated twenty thirteen, it's the most updated report. Keep that number in mind, two hundred and seventeen two million dollars. Please join me on page three. Page three is our physical plant capital replacement lifecycle study over the next ten years. FY twenty-five through FY thirty-four, we have an average annual cost, estimated annual handle, estimated annual average cost, two point six nine million dollars, which is one percent less than the estimated appraised value of our building at two hundred and seventeen million dollars. Keep in mind, FY twenty-six, FY two thirty-four, the projected budget is always evolving as projects may move different fiscal years based on the budget that's presented to us. Moving forward over the next few pages, we're gonna focus on FY twenty-five project and our large-ticket items coming down the pipeline. You have a colored, I take a colored project in front of you. The green ones are completed or near completion for FY twenty-five so far. The next one on the package I like to bring forward, some plan two, is the Plumley High School East Chiller. It was overhauled in twenty sixteen and has been taken on repairs ever since then, near the end of the pipeline, the Chiller. Bring that to the board. Moving down the years here, other large-ticket items coming through the pipeline, as mentioned, the synthetic turf at the high school, FY twenty-nine projected, you know, can be moved up according to the budget as needed. And then rooftop unit replacements at Leggie, Cheswick, and Martin is another large ticket item coming down the pipeline. Continue on pages eight through twelve, the same information given to you in the ten-year, but this has been sorted through tax. So an example of what's coming down the pipeline is asphalt replacements at two hundred, sorry, six hundred, six million point three million dollars, sorry, I need my numbers straight here, and the rooftop replacements at those three billion things I mentioned at almost two point four million dollars coming down the next ten years. Without any further questions, I would like to keep moving forward on the FY twenty-five project as I present them to the board in future. No questions?
Any questions from the board or the committee?
Ms. Murray, that was a great question about the field, thank you.
Because before we did it, when we originally, has it been fifteen years by the time you'll do it next time, or around there?
Around there, yes, twenty thirteen.
Do they, I didn't turn on my mic, do they normally just last fifteen years with so many things that we do?
The projected lifecycle is actually twelve years on the field, so since we do the maintenance routine on it twice a year, every time the inspector comes, says, you guys are doing a great job, here's where you need to focus on, you know, as far as copying the field to keep it ready for the next piece coming up.
Thanks.
And it's not just the usage, but it's the elements too, because it takes on sun every day, or rain, or snow, and the cold and whatnot. So it's not just the usage of the field, it's the elements that probably beat it up more than anything else.
It probably dulls that, it looks dull, yeah.
But that's why you do the impact testing, to make sure.
Absolutely, casey impact testing.
Good, right.
And that's done annually, that test?
Every spring.
Okay. And then as far as the forecast going forward for the capital improvements, because we've gotten the roofing done, that really brings those costs down significantly over the next decade or so.
A little bit, but as you see in the report, there's some large-ticket items coming down the pipeline, number one being a high school east chiller.
Yeah. That one's been on the radar for a while.
Talking about chillers and roofs, so roofs have kind of been conquered. It's, it's, chillers look like they're the, you know, we've done a lot of asphalt that continues on like the, yeah, chillers, the Heinemann chillers that you show, I mean, you get like two million, two-two on that.
Correct.
I don't think it costs fifteen million to build that thing originally, the whole point.
Right.
I like the chillers all of a sudden.
So those are the same units that we just put on Marlowe's last year FY twenty-four?
Yeah, I don't disbelieve it, I'm just, come on.
The cost of everything is getting out of hands.
How was, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just one quick question, sorry. I'm gonna ask you a bunch of questions.
Sure, absolutely.
So in terms of the pricing here, it says that you use present value. I'm just wondering if it makes sense to do that or assume some sort of inflation rate because if someone looked down three, four years down the road and who said the field or the field is six hundred thousand dollars, and it actually ends up being like eight hundred thousand dollars, it might look like we're not good at estimating, but we were just doing present dollars. And I know we can't forecast, but you might wanna put a little bit of, but I don't know if you have an opinion, you're an accountant, so you might want the present value, but I'm trying to.
I'd rather have, I would.
Expectation.
I would want the projected inflation value, what I would want to be on there.
Yeah, we could, we could easily, you know, add in, you know, an inflationary value purchase price adjustment, if you will, maintaining the numbers we have, because for a lot of the items that we do have in there, we have, we have relative quotes to reference against, right?
More recent.
More recent, right? We have an understanding of what we think some of the things are gonna cause that Mr. Rinkowski has baked into this, and if we added an inflationary increase based on yearly, you know, a roll.
Three percent a year.
Yeah, three percent a year, CPI, the average CPI per year, it'd be something very easy to bake into the future, and we can continue to just monitor that present value and have the calculations roll it up, present value, that would be very easy to add.
It might be just good because I assume you're taking this as an input into your future budgets, or maybe you're using a straight line, just three million, four million dollars a year.
Well, typically, right, this is a ten-year deferred maintenance plan, but what we do when I'm working with Mr. Rinkowski, now Mr. Lindquist, and the team, even curriculum, even technology, when we roll out that five-year plan, each of those departments have a five-year plan based on their needs of their infrastructure and the curriculum needs of new adoptions and whatnot. We take the numbers, I historically taken the numbers from this deferred maintenance report, so to your point, do they reflect an annual inflationary increase? No, they don't, and they probably shouldn't.
Yeah, and just, I.
And those numbers would tie.
Really detailed, so appreciate Doug's level, and your level of detail in this, because you can go through there and look and say, this is when the field will get updated, this is when our board will get updated. We'll watch for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else to highlight on this report? Walk us through. All good? Okay, thank you. All right, that closes out on him for the night.
All right, the potential legislation and policy committee, no legislation update ever?
There were a few, there were a few things that I know we received through IFA, Mr. Altman, if I saw the same things through ISO, IAFB is probably gonna have some of the same things coming out. At this time of year, on an annual basis, they put out there the teachers and the salary, we are above that. We are above that. Then there were a few new public acts, some things around early childhood that we had been watching and seeing there was some components, election timelines, some things with by January, something that city security and we'll be working with health service cardiac response plan that needs to be in place by January 2025. Some sunsetting of the PF committee that Dr. Zerri will work with and it's kind of extended that with the sunset here, June 24, but it actually extends a little bit further into the end of the school year with just some changes about the, our CTE and how they fit in with the evaluation 10-year track and all of those components there. And then some changes with some of the special education tuition reimbursement, how that we can answer, kind of following those and seeing how that might impact either per day to day operations or anything that we may be able to claim in the future for some of our programs.
Does that cover the policy?
Nope.
Oh.
Okay. Let's make it. So, in policies, yep, in the packet there, there was, this was what seemed like it would have been a larger policy from press, but actually with many of the changes in there were wording changes. When we looked at information about the board attorney policy, 2.160, were things like adding, it changed where there were abbreviations and it spelled out what is IASB. They put the whole name instead of their adding instead of press. They were changing that to sample policy. So, none of these were things that we felt were large changes that were going forward. The accounting and audits policy for 80 looked at what we're able to do for petty cash and one of our funds from $500 to $1,000. A couple of the others went from where they were taking the acronym for maybe an organization and spelling it out and other policies, they went from spelling it out to changing it to the acronym. So, again, there were footnote changes referencing different laws, but nothing that was substantial that would change any of our practices or our policies moving forward. We did receive a new one today, so we'll be bringing that forward probably in September. So, kind of severing a little bit with our policy and press changes that are being recommended. Any questions on that packet?
Any issue with moving those forward for first reading?
With that for, if nothing else, we'll move to number 11 for any relations.
All right, thank you. I don't have any updates, but I know Mrs. Barra does. You can go right next.
Yes, thank you. Well, it's getting to be that exciting time of year for us here and everybody's been working so hard to get things ready for the new school year. Couple of things I wanted to mention as a community, we're going to participate in the Enjoy Huntley Week, which kicks off on Sunday. And I think that first event is a family bike ride that the police department is hosting. So, for people who don't know what Enjoy Huntley Week is, it's an opportunity to participate in some free family fun that's being offered by the park district, the library, the school district also participates in that. And so, it's just an opportunity to kind of all pull together as a community and do some really fun things. One of the things I wanted to mention and just remind everybody is about our movie night, which is a week from tomorrow, so Friday, August 9th. And that's our showing of Charlotte's Web, which kind of keeps the conclusion of our Raider III together out on the football field. So, that will kick off that evening around 7 o'clock and then we show it around the dump. And then on to school stuff, just you guys should have all gotten a quick at a glance back to school important date flyer, but on August 5th, I mean, this is coming up really fast. On Monday, we have our kindergarten sneak peek. We also have a view that we have going on next week at the middle schools is our jump start program for sixth graders. So, there's a few different dates for that. And then material pickup is happening, material pickup is happening also at the middle schools and the high schools. Freshman Raider rally is happening a week from tomorrow, so Friday, August 9th. So, that's kind of exciting. And then open house for elementary and middle schools is August 12th. We have our early childhood open house happening on August 13th and 14th. And then finally, our first day of school, so only two weeks from now. So, first day of school being August 14th for grade 11 through 12 in the light program, August 16th for kindergarten and August 16th for early childhood. And then the last date on this here that we're looking at, when we're looking at August, it's very full, is the high school back to school night, which is August 27th. So, we are just, we're getting super excited to welcome the students back for a great school year.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
All right, number 12, the Board of Education, 12.1, the minute. Looking to, any comments on the minute from anybody? We'll move those minutes forward for a group over the next COE meeting. Any objections? And then 12.2, the attendance presentation, since we're all here.
Mrs. Barra is going to go ahead and pull up that presentation. Last time I could have gone there. We'll go there and we'll wait for that to get pulled up here. But this presentation, while I am presenting it, has been the hard work of so many individuals and a lot of different parts of this presentation have been being rolled, been rolled out to our administrators. So, the things coming up on Monday with our administrative assistants who are actually coding and putting in attendance, rolling those things out with some of this information on next Friday, the welcome back letter, or welcome back, well, it will be a letter, but it'll also be a video, kind of talks about one of our main goals being tackling the chronic absenteeism. Like I said, we have the administrative training admin assistant on Monday, on the 12th. That early that morning, we will be sending out our annual attendance policy and letter. In there will be some of those expectations and changes and a couple of our one-pagers that we took the information from recommendations through PTAC and some of the other things that we've talked about and how do we put it into some of these snippets? So, as we campaign, certain things will go out at the beginning and then little nuggets of this information will continually go on. We don't want to overload, but we want to make sure people are understanding, focusing on what's most important at the beginning and then how that rolls out there. And then we will have information set out at our open houses as well as a lot of this going in the next parent newsletter that would go out on the 18th. So, a lot of this information, again, in those nuggets being digested by our families and our staff and how these changes are occurring and why it's important as well as how we'll support families and students. So, thank you for putting that on up there and we'll kind of go through these pieces here. So, the purpose of our presentation tonight, if you could drive that for me, that would be fantastic. Yep?
Technical issue?
Nope, no worries.
While we're waiting, one of the ways that we're communicating the little nuggets, but what's our social media presence with this? Because I think there's a lot of people that this might not, but what they see on social media.
We'll get that as part of the presentation and if I didn't answer well enough, then we can come back around and look at those pieces. You'll drive? All right, thank you.
Got it?
All right, while they're doing that, the purpose tonight is to review high-level the Huntley 158 practices and policies around attendance and related to attendance, brief review of the historical attendance data here in the district to provide insight on the work that has been done this summer and how this will continue and to build an understanding and open lines of communication around attendance and the impacts with all of our stakeholders. So, attendance, last time we had the little behavior noun in there, so attendance is a noun, the action or state of going regularly to or being present at a place or an event. So, that regularly is extremely important. We need to reset some of our expectations and working with families and students, reset their attendance at regular school events, all of those components in there. So, highlighting again, two, we're trying to tackle chronic absenteeism. So, what is chronic absenteeism? There's still, I think, some misunderstandings that we'll have to get across all of our stakeholders. So, absence, where we can tap into our regional office of education, is anybody who is receiving 5% or more of unexcused absences. Chronic absenteeism, doesn't matter if they're excused or unexcused, it's 10% or more of the academic year for any reason. It might be an illness, it could be suspensions, it could be excused absence, unexcused absence, all of those things. And when you break that down, that's only two days of missed school per month. So, when you think about, okay, in September, my kiddo was out for two days, is there really that big of an impact? But if that pattern were to continue, they're hitting that chronic absenteeism. On the next slide, we take this, we think about our MTSS that you've heard a lot about with our behavior, our attendance and how does this align? We'll be talking about how some of those supports and communication go based on where they fall with this. So, we've got no attendance issues in the green, trending chronic, it's 92.6 to 95% attendance, 90 to 92 nearly chronic, 90 or less chronically absent and severe chronic attendance issues at 80% or less. And so, one of the things we want to tie in, while we are talking about individual students with families or in our data meetings, is looking at the combination of attendance, behavior and academics. So, the why. All right, so here's just a little bit, we only went back a few years here, but you can see the trend of chronic absenteeism. 2018, we were at 12.5%, 2019, it went down a little bit, but to me, that stayed pretty steady. We put a red box around the next two. This was impacted by our pandemic, right? And so, 2020, 6.6, well, remember, most of that was virtual. And so, getting on, whether that was accurate or not, going into 2021, it jumped up to 18.3, however, we were telling families that their students had to stay out for periods of time. Going into 2022, that climbed up a little bit to 19.6. 2023 was 25.8. I don't think I can give what 2024 is estimated to be yet on our school report card because it's embargoed, but we're excited. I'll just leave it at that. So, and that's with some of the work that was behind the scenes done and with some of our families that schools really worked on, but having this a district-wide approach, we are expecting to see some great work happening there. So, our beliefs about attendance. When you think about that student who is in the middle, the star, behavior, the learning and attendance all impact that student. They're not separated in silos. And in the past, those things more like looked at and different groups talked about, the learning part, the attendance part and the behavior component. As we see that they're all intertwined, which is the great success happening for each of our individual students. And we are really, really excited to be able to look at that through our unified insights the way we're able to hold data and specify what does Jessica need, what does Amy need, what does Tony need? And they may all look very, very different, but it is based on data that we have specific to those individual students. Why should attendance be a key focus? Student attendance impacts student success and academics and achievement, language development, social development and future career. Here, I won't read all of the components that are out there, but research is showing students who are frequently absent may perform or form poor habits and mindsets about dependability that will and can affect job performance. Fewer opportunities to develop relationships with adults and peers, negative interactions between students and staff may increase due to frustrations around absences, more likely to act out due to this frustration. The side research that we're getting from EAB and a number of other sources, students who miss 10% or more typically have lower TPAs in test course, have more difficulty establishing and maintaining positive peer relationships, are less likely to develop behavioral and social emotional skills that again are important for schools, but even more after they leave us into the careers that they go into, are at the greatest risk of dropping out and exhibit higher rates of involvement and criminal justice. This again is more research out there that shows with just two absences a month in the first month of school, most of students who are just having that, say, were in September, go on to have more than 25 days total. Students who miss two days or more a month tend to be more stressed or anxious. That miss 10 or more a year are less likely to graduate on time. Who miss two days a month are less likely to read at grade level by the end of third grade. And so, we're going to be looking at, as we have some of our curriculum nights where we're sharing the data with all of you, with parents showing that direct correlation of how does my attendance impact or what are we seeing when we're looking at that student achievement component? So, again, we can have more robust conversations because, well, why, you know, if I just missed two days or four days, I started to think about, you're hitting that 18 number if you're two per month. Well, some of our months, there are shorter months where we have some of the holidays or breaks, you're in school less than that anyway. That's a whole month in our calendar that you are missing from school. Of course, that's going to impact the student. So, why do we need a district-wide approach? We saw that some of these things that were being tackled individually at all of our buildings and the work that was done behind the scenes with making sure things were right in what does a day look like in the number of hours, we saw improvements. But doing this as a district-wide approach is going to help tackle that. It's also going to help parents who have students at multiple buildings understand why did Cheswick do this, but over here at Marlowe, it was done a little bit different and that impacted the high school. So, what we've developed are clear, concise communication and expectation for all stakeholders, especially our students. Consistent targeted responses on those absences that are specific to individuals and the root cause. It impacts student achievement, it impacts future success. It doesn't seem like that to the person who, maybe if my child was absent, how does that impact the learning environment of others? But as kids are coming in and out and not having regular attendance in that classroom, the teacher having to rearrange things or meet in small groups absolutely does have an impact on the learning of other students. And the consistent reporting of absences is going to give us in our unified insights the meaningful actionable data to tackle that again on the individual basis. Okay, so the what? So, we redefined expectations. Some of those are students, an expectation that we have is that students should be in school when they're able. Parents should prioritize student attendance during the school year. The schools, we should be providing an environment that's welcoming, engaging, the place that students want to come and we're able to meet their individual needs. Then we're going to campaign around that, Mrs. Lyle, and we'll get to some of those examples here in a minute, that is going to really be front-loaded, but again, throughout the year, about why it's important to be present at school and then providing a supportive environment. So, the schools have all worked and you might remember from last year, we had Chan and we talked about the stoic, what does that environment look like? So, we're talking about attendance and how do we provide an environment that is supportive around there? We look at stoic down there, structuring our classrooms for engagement, allowing students to want to be in class. Teaching provides consistent access to learning, oh, observing students' attendance patterns, interactive, or interacting positively to build relationships and correcting fluently to perform or to perform consistently. We know that three essential components are here. It's the parents and understanding and knowing why and when to bring their students to school. When you think about it, it's only a couple of years ago where we were saying, your student needs to be out for this period of time. For many of our students during that component of the pandemic, grades, attendance, all that was looked at a little bit different. We wanted to make sure that at least they got on, right? Where some of the grading happened, there were some state mandates that were looked at and parents are now saying, well, why was it okay for them not to be in school in 2020, 2021, but now there's such a. But now there's such a focus on that. But we've seen correlations to the academic achievement. As our numbers are climbing with chronic absenteeism in some of our subjects, we are seeing a decline in our student scores. Two, students. We need them to understand that they can and want to show up to school. So again, those different reasons. That classroom is warm and welcoming, they're building relationships with the adults that are in the building so that they want to be at school. And teachers, understanding and embracing their role in impacting attendance. Typically, it's been thought of, well, that's an office function, right? They send the letters out, they look at the data, they decide, okay, this letter goes out this month versus that month. But we also know that research shows, who is the person that parents feel most comfortable with talking in a school district? Certainly not me, it's the teacher, right? And so to have some of those conversations about, is there something that I can do as a teacher to help your child want to come to school? Or is there something that's impacting, how can I do this? And they could bring that to the team to talk about. Is it something with transportation? Is it with something with anxiety? They might be that conduit who can't fix it, but they could be the person who can bring that to the larger team. But so they're going to be looking at some things that teachers will do and other staff members versus administration and even those of us who are at the district office. So we took a little communications roadmap, you might remember this a little bit from last year, and put together a roadmap of improving attendance and the components that need to be here if we are going to improve and decrease chronic absenteeism. Clear and consistent what, a compelling why. Attendance does matter. Support, how are we supporting our staff in setting up their classrooms and knowing what strategies can be utilized with a variety of students? How do we support our students and how do we support our parents? Communication needs to be frequent, it needs to be ongoing, it needs to be individualized, and it needs to be supportive. If we're sending out communication that is generic, I'm not seeing that impact. And probably as a parent reading this, oh, you're not talking to me and moving that on. So it might be in some of those letters where Jessica has missed X number of days compared to other students in this building would be this. And it might or some be, oh, wow, I didn't realize that I thought this was something that was okay and acceptable. And the bottom is collaborative partnerships. All stakeholders partnering and wrapping around supportive measures to enhance and promote positive support. You've seen the MTSS structure, so again, we won't go into too much there. But in looking at this, this isn't something new, right? We may be pushing it a little bit harder and looking at these pieces, but all of this impacts how do we provide support for our students? Now the what. So that multi-tiered system of support for attendance starts with tier one. A universal attendance campaign district-wide. Attendance policies have been updated. Administrative assisted training on attendance coding for accuracy. Clarify the teacher expectations and clarity for leadership expectations. How are we going to do that? So we look at the first one, a universal attendance campaign. I did not put all of these because we can't just throw it out there at once, it just defeats the purpose. So in September, it's Attendance Awareness Month, a national attendance. So we'll be sending a lot of this out in August, but this is where we're going to hit it real heavy, especially on our social media. Your presence is your power. Is there slogan? We're still working on the graphic here, so this might change a little bit. But helping students understand by being present at school, it's your power to be able to obtain the skill. It's your power to be able to find opportunities that will help you meet your lifelong goal. It's your power to have a voice and a say in the courses that you're taking or the path that you're getting to show how that you've reached success or mastery. This is one example of one of our graphics. We are going to really push out hard each month. So here's an example of one of those. That doesn't mean this is going to be early on, but did you know? Attending school every day has an impact beyond elementary, middle, and high school. Research shows almost 90% of students that miss 15 days a year in high school drop out of college or prepare for the future by encouraging consistent attendance every day that your student is. So while this one focuses on something that's college, something else is going to focus on the career. Some of these other are going to show how does it impact reading? So again, we've got these, we've got more than enough for the year. And we're going to decide when would be appropriate or maybe which students or which families might need to be targeted with some of the campaigning. So these are the things, Mrs. Lyle, that we're going to see out on social media on a regular basis. We'll be putting these also in our newsletters. We know that there are a number of people who should, I hope more, are reading those newsletters. And then that will mirror what's being sent out in our school newsletters and potentially our classroom newsletters again. So they'll see it in multiple venues, multiple approaches, and on a regular basis. So it's not a one in doubt. The how. Our attendance policies have been updated. So these little here, a lot of these one-pagers, were those changes. But again, if we were to say, go to the handbooks, read it, people aren't going to do that. And so again, we'll have that letter that's going to go out that will preface a lot of those pieces along with the five clarity on what is an excused versus unexcused, the common makeup work policy. I think we have a little work to do there because it talks about our excused absences. But as we know, we've made a lot of shifts that, do we want to penalize again for that wedding or something there? So we're going to really tweak that and make sure that that's very different than an unverified absence. Extending absence is defined as unexcused. Clarity around illness and doctor's notes and emergency absence type clarification. So this is one that's going to be really important. Again, it's not going to matter, I think sometimes it's not going to matter for all on how it's coded. It's still going to be out. But for a number of our families, there's a big difference between excused and unexcused. So up here, we'll be putting this out there early on before the school year so that they know this piece of that. We've armed or will on the fifth arm our front office staff with some talking points. They're going to be the one who is going to be marking that. They might be the person, if there's enough step-parent calling in first, they're going to hit that line, apply her from the get-go to some talking points. And again, one in doubt, if we can't calm them down, they're going to go to an industry who can help explain that. But it's important for our parents to understand, they will always maintain the decision to whether or not to send this child to school, right? That is their right as a parent to decide today we're going or nope, we're going to go to one of these other things. However, so we're not taking that away, but we do have the right as a school or a district to decide what's excused versus what's not excused and how to code those. We're going to say that, we're going to help people understand that. It will shift some of the practices. I think some of this will take some time as we move forward. So this will be an ongoing year-after-year component. Clarity with what's the teacher versus the leadership expectation. And again, research shows that many organizations, school districts, public, private, all, teachers are unutilized in the fight against absenteeism. And they are the person that has the best relationship, should have the best relationship with a student and the family. So if we look, 72% parents are going to go to them first or anything school-related. 40% to the principal or vice principal, maybe a guidance counselor is pretty close there. That number there is rising on the TV, internet, radio, social media. And then we still have many that go to a friend or family. We want to make sure everybody has the information regardless who they're going to at that source, but hopefully pointing them back to the school. So we don't go too deep into these, but we do have, if you take a peek at the last page on here, really talks about what is our response as a school based on that level. And this is very similar to what we did for behavior. So that national, what part do I manage versus what's going to happen in the office? And we've given them, or we will be during our training, because it's Evanad Institute Day, the resources to be able to do this effectively. So that's the component here that breaks it down. Oh, Dr. McCrane, will you go?
I'm sorry.
No, 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 I was clicking here, not realizing, go to this one. Yep, so this is talking about, we're monitoring attendance and celebrating success on a global level in the school. There might be some friendly competitions or some rewards for some grade level or classroom kinds of things. I know many people keep asking about, do we go back to perfect attendance? The fear with perfect attendance is kids will want to strive for that and come in even when they're sick, right? So maybe we'll have goals that'll be set at different levels that's not at 100%, but pretty close. Because there are going to be times that if I am contagious and I really shouldn't be there, we don't want you there, we want you to stay home. But there could be some really fun things. I think somebody, I don't remember, asked, who of us in the room might be in a dump tank at some point if kids reach their goals or whatnot? Yeah, right?
Get your crackly out.
Buildings.
Building competition.
So there could be some different components there. Ways that teachers will communicate with families. Schools checking in on students. We'll continue to monitor attendance again and celebrate as it moves into the yellow. As it's moving into that orange, communication with the family from building administration. Those should be personalized phone calls, there will be letters. Making sure that an informal team meeting to determine what are the supports needed. Each of our levels, it will look a little bit different because of just the way our supports are. We've got the pods, support staff that can assist at the high school. The team approach at the middle school and at the elementary. We've got a variety of people coming around to the table. So again, we can look at what are those attendance patterns, why? Who is the best person to reach out to talk to the family with a relationship? And then if it's based on car trouble, hey, we're doing this. If it's based on anxiety, we might need to be doing some things here. If it's that, maybe they're not engaging in the math. Do we need to look a little deeper? Is that a struggle for the student? Is there something going on in that specific classroom that we can tackle? Chronically absent, 90% or less. Communication with the family from building administration. Family meeting to determine the support needs. They're coming in, we're sitting down, we're developing a plan, conferencing with the students. And that's a very individualized plan based on that root cause. And continue to monitor plans and celebrate success. So many people in this room or with our own children or who either sent or we've received that letter giving you for attendance. Well, we've talked about, all right, so what about the family who's seen, that student has seen that they've maintained after we put a plan in place? So there's no further absences, but you're still sitting at eight. Well, instead of sending that punitive letter of, hey, you're still at eight, how about we send that letter that's really celebrating that individual success? Talking about, you've maintained this, you're only at eight, you know, based on those kinds of things. The way that things are written really matters. And that celebrating improvement is a critical component here. The severe chronic absenteeism, there's a variety of different things that we can put in place with truancy, wraparound from other countywide support. We may have to be looking again at, you know, is this the right class? That a student is taking, if they're continually missing that, how is that impacting the other students? How is it impacting that individual student? And then on the next one, it's just done in a flowchart form. So however of a visual learner you are, we've got that in a variety of different components, pretty much saying the same thing. But the if this, then this kind of step of how we would tackle both at a school and an individual student level. We even have, thank you Miss Affair, put out, and this is just one. Here's a calendar for us on various dates, every seven to 10 days. It's going to be when those letters are going out so families know on a continuous, ongoing basis around at seven to 10 days, you're going to get a letter giving those numbers. We also have, Mrs. Barr is working right now with our new messenger that starting on the first full week, attendance messages will go out automatically for any students who haven't been called in, and these are unverified students. After two days that we have heard from the family, it will change from an unverified to an unexcused absence. So I want to give a little bit of a leeway, but they will get it automated, whether it's a text, a phone call, an email, or all of the above on that daily basis. And I believe we're working through that, Dr. Beal and Mrs. Barr, on period, at least on period, too. That might look a little bit different, but this will go out within the first hour that a student is unverified. And that'll look a smidge different with the next period by period, class by class. Ending kind of with a quote here, success is earned one day at a time. Start by showing up. What are the consequences if we just sit back and allow time or allow this trend to continue? We as a district don't want to find that, right? The time right now is to act and we're really going to tackle this. I will have to admit, we had a lot of discussion ongoing at various meetings and again, yesterday on that. Just changes in practices and bringing people around is going to be hard work, but it's important work. And so we will support the buildings. And the buildings will be supporting the teachers and the teachers and all this wrapping around what do the families and. So questions?
I guess the first thing is, we support you with what you're doing, right? This is a lot of effort. Is the right thing to do? When I talk about with other people, I always say, you know, what we found out is if the kids go to school, they learn better, they learn more. And it's so obvious, but yet the trend was going the other way. So it is our job as a district to not give the excuse to let someone miss school. Yeah, the parents have the ultimate decision, but it is our job to not necessarily excuse them. So I guess, I guess one thing I wanted to highlight, because you went over it, but the, there was some testing done last year or some initiatives put in last year that actually made some effect in the year. I mean, do you want to give a little bit more color on that?
Yes.
There was a lot of good work and you could see that it changed things just by doing that.
Yes. So in every one of our buildings, there were students that were identified that had either year after year patterns of chronic absenteeism for a variety of different reasons and rationale. And so I could give examples in every one of our buildings that really sat down and really, hey, these three to five families, whatever that might be, really hit hard. Those things make an impact. Did it change every family? No, but it only takes a couple, or the more they hear it, right? My kids quit nagging me. Well, we're not nagging, we're trying to do this in a supportive approach. That it will start to kick in. Maybe it didn't this year, but those conversations have started. Well, not that I don't want to call out anybody, but we've talked about some of the efforts that we saw that were extremely fruitful at Martin with that consistent, regular, timely communication through phone calls and emails. And we saw that calendar, we're going to do that across the board. Letters were going out, people were doing those things. But what worked and what were some of those strategies that we can enhance and make better across the board? One of our principals was like, wow, you know, when you get that person on the phone, it truly makes a difference. And so all I know, emails are very easy. These robo calls are going to be easy. For many of our students, we've got to have and prioritize that time to get parents on the phone or in the building with their students around so that families can see how we support. I think it was at the Square Bar and PTA and we were talking about attendance and all of the services that can be provided to students and families. And many of them sat back or like, we had no idea these were things that can be offered. I had no idea, wow, our vacation impacts this plus these other things. And again, families are going to prioritize. And they hear this, they're going to think about, okay, I'm going to take this one vacation, but I'm not going to take the other two during the school year. Or maybe some of the other things that we're doing for long weekends might change those kind of components. We also know that there are some, you know, some families where depending on the job that the parent's in, they have to bid out vacation time. We get it, we understand those things. But then how do we look at the other absences that are impacting and talk about those pieces that are going on there? Again, in our learning and innovation, because the one doesn't want to be called out by name, so we'll go for the whole team. But a lot of looking at the backend of working with technology on a regular basis of how is this coded so that if a student does, if they are taken out half the day, what is that timing? they are taken out half the day, what is that timing look like that is going to qualify for a full day absence versus a half day absence? Or the way things were coded where this event does show a presence, right? So if not, while the student, maybe it's home hospitalization, homebound, if something is preventing them, but we're giving services while they're out, it's not necessarily hurting us, we need to make sure that's a student present in the background, but some of those things. And so those were just small things that were going on on that backend to really make sure our structures and our systems and people trying out these things. There are a lot of conversations around, some book talks around attendance that are seeing, you know, how do we support and where do we find these? We've talked about what will some of our data meetings that have been typically our student achievement component and looking at the academic, but we're going to be bringing in behavior and attendance there because again, all three of those things go hand in hand. And so again, we can't give that percentage, but by seeing those things that were great going on, but again, in a little bit different in each of our buildings, we did see an impact on that. And so I'm extremely excited to see how a concerted, ongoing effort that is consistent will really, really impact. And the individuals that are out there, they know it's important. We all work together and we collaborate on the how and the why and the what, but they're the ones that carry it out every day. And so I just, they tackled champs, like champs last year in the behavior, and we've seen that impact, it's not going away because we have work to do, but it ties in with the attendance and the way that they tackled that this summer and how that's going to roll out, we couldn't do our jobs without them. And they're very tasked, and the why, it's because all of it impacts the child. And we do what we do for kids. And so this is going to be hard work, but we've got this. So thank you to every one of you who are sitting out there who've had a part of this. Your work is not going nowhere.
Then just one small question, updates throughout the year in the board meetings?
Oh, yeah, we can do. We've talked about how we put some of this in various dashboards.
We don't need the daily COVID dashboard, we don't need to go back.
No, no, no.
We can just leave that for memory.
But that's a, that's a great point. So not only is it you guys needing what those updates are, I think parents do, they need to see. We're going to give them specifics, but we can also do building wide and a variety of things that we can do as part of our campaign and put those out on social media, different avenues. Because again, sometimes they don't realize, what, this isn't normal, you know, 18 or 19 days? No, it's not, and how is that impact? And so how do we go moving forward?
The other thing that we've talked about, and I think Mr. Coglan, I know you asked this, but we're going to start to look at data and seeing what does the attendance records look like in comparison to how our kids are achieving on their state assessments. And so we just started that initial dive, we just uploaded all of our state assessment data preliminary into Unified Insights, and we're hoping to be able to start to see those correlations. And as you predicted, pretty obvious.
Right, it would be, yeah, it would be pretty obvious. And I was, the comment that's going to make is, you know, if there's a way to positively message this.
Yes.
Suppose, I mean, I'm not adverse to the two hard facts of negative effect of it, positive effect of it, I don't care if you make up the stats and say, yeah, you miss five, the last day, you outperform your other students by 25%. I mean, I don't care, whatever that actually works out. Whatever it works out. Whatever you want to message it, I'm fine with that.
And you're on the finance chair, right?
Pull up her data, we'll go and get after it.
You have quantifiable, I got to do this, exaggeration there. I just want to reinforce the positive element of them and more or less the message of, parents, give your, give your kids the opportunity to just succeed, okay? By allowing them to succeed.
And we, we saw that with the attendance letters that were sent out, in the past, the way that they're written, yeah, kind of punitive, if you don't do this, do this, here are the things, rather than what can we do to help you be here, but celebrate those things? You get that letter, your defenses go up, you shut down, you stop listening. So while some of this data is showing that other component, we absolutely can, we talked a lot about how we show that correlation in here, but the data's embargoed. So you have to wait a little bit, October, we can, we will definitely, November. So when we have those, we will make sure that we're talking about that correlation to the attendance and the behavior as well.
I mean, realistically too, I think we're accepting some ownership as a district on why this happened. So when you go, when you look at that data, 2020 is what caused a lot of this to happen. So we own that, we say, yep, we understand why that happened. And I think giving those supportive services and saying, what can we do to help you now? It's changing the mindset. So now we're saying, we own some culpability in this, we can help you to change this, but I'm just very proud of the fact that this work has been done and we have something concrete and we're willing to push it out there because I think this is what's going to continue to make this district that destination district that we say that we are. Others are going to follow our lead, we're not chasing other districts. Now, we are going to be an example of what can be done to improve this, and I want to, I would love to have a celebration next year. And maybe we will see all of the data showing markedly improved, marked improvements, but we're going to have definite improvements. And it's going to be a lot of tough conversations, and I really applaud the staff for having to have those tough conversations because it's something that's going to be very uncomfortable at first. But I'm really positive that you know that you have our support and they know that there's, the support rises up. And I don't know if that message has always gotten down into the staff at the school level, but I'm very proud of it, I'm trying to embrace this now and learn that.
I think Ms. Wiley is our first volunteer for the dump tank.
I think so, right? Yeah.
She did, she did.
You know, one, one thing that you brought up that, that kind of jogged something in my mind, yeah, I remember being in school and then you'd get like a perfect attendance certificate, and yeah, you're right, you don't want to have six kids, you know, coming to school. But is there somewhere, like in Power School or somewhere where kids are looking that they could see, you know, I'm thinking of like apps that could use like a streak. So, you know, their consecutive number of days that they've been in attendance, and maybe you can measure that by semester and reset. So to your point, if they missed eight days, but now their streak has set over again, it's kind of cumulative that, and it's kind of a positive reinforcement and visual for them to see.
I, we can look into technology with Power School and all that to see if there are some automated ways, some very visual things, similar to behavior, depending on the age of the student. Sometimes it's something right there that at the end of the day, there's all, I mean, what kids work for stickers for, right? You know, it's all the things or the star, whatever it is, they're seeing, wow, this week, I got here two days, next week, it was three days. Let's celebrate and be proud of that. We can have some of the other conversations about, oh my gosh, it's still at this level, but let that be with the adults, and to have some of those pieces. And so a lot of that is very individualized, but what can we do, especially when they're hitting at the middle and high school level? They might not want the sticker chart, but what can we do for those? That's a great point.
But if something like that, then, then you have both sides of the equation kind of working together because you have the engagement from, from the faculty and the teacher side of things stressing the importance to the student and to the parent. Then you have the other end of the student who's trying to do their best and achieve that, that perfect record. And then to Mr. Wiley Addo's point, you have a metric that's very visible that can correlate to their performance in, in school.
That's, you have the unified insight, and this is a great way to show that, part of that. So it'll be fun to get in there and see all of those correlations.
Is there a way to utilize the Unified Insights to automate some of this? So that if you have certain tier of absenteeism that's crossed, you have the pyramid thresholds where there are more personalized messages or there's a balance there, but I think that the personalized messages actually carry a little bit more weight than social media. I think too, too often nowadays, social media is a crutch and a box check. Yes, we post it on social media, but you're, you're forced, or you're anticipating that somebody's actually going to click on it with interest and read it. And, and I think that there's, it's a passive interaction versus an active interaction. I think the active interaction is far more effective than, than the passive one. So if there's a way to provide more messaging around this, positively impact it so that it focuses on, on those families where the absenteeism is at a higher rate instead of the people that not so much, you know?
Yeah.
My, my kids are there 99% of the time.
Right.
Absenteeism is not an issue for me.
Right. So they're at that tier one, and so some of those pieces that might be on the social media, it's just, it's for the masses. And then how do we do? Marlo, EAB is, is one of our research companies that we work very closely with, and it was for our multiple, we've narrowed it down, the work that they do and how timely it has been about foreseeing what are some of these upcoming situations and the research that they've already done, they were integral when we were looking at some of the things with behavior, now attendance, when we're looking at strategic planning, there's some of the components with staff morale. And so one of the things that came out last year that Marlo tried a little bit, they were called nudge letters or nudge messages, and they were specific to that. And so while it wasn't, it was work for the office staff to do, but it was meaningful and impactful for those families and the students. I'm not going to ask, I'm not going to put a lie, I'm going to put it on the spot. So we'll look at what Messenger or Power School or Unified Insight can do, but Mr. Krack is a whiz with putting together.
He's a whiz, period.
Right. But I'm, like, some of the things he did, yeah, automated some of the way our, our behavior was tracked and some of the automaticity of messages that were able to go out was phenomenal. And he was like, yep, here's the problem, listening in, and to be able to do that was fantastic. I know when he was at the high school before, Dr. Beal is like, he needs to be in here because we're looking at grades of these and that, and this and this and this, and taking that all together and put this together really quickly. And so I don't know, we may be able to take some of those thoughts if we can't get it through some of our current technologies, be able to do some of that. Because again, it takes time, but if we could save some of the time with that, but again, the individualized components are going to be what makes the difference for most of our families.
And, and we've moved into personalized learning plans, right? So is there a way to translate that into personalized attendance plans?
Oh, yes.
And, and look at, okay, what, what can help in order, whether it's more information out, more information about the support, more information about makeup work or whatever it is, but some kind of a personalized attendance plan to help families, you know, answer some of these questions too, that they may now know what to ask.
When we were verging on the yellow, but definitely when we're getting into the orange and red, yeah, that's a plan, and how is that individualized, what is that going to look like? And a lot of that should be, okay, here's the plan, how do we celebrate those pieces? What is going to assist the student and the family? And if we need to support staff, depending on what that plan is showing, how do we do that? But then celebrate those pieces. And you know, one of the things we've talked about, how do we celebrate for that student and that family? Also, we're going to need to celebrate what's the work that the staff has been doing because it's going to be a lift. I know that there's multiple times, you know, it's like, oh, we missed student class. Those little words for students make a big difference. And then, you know, if you start there and how do you go? So our, our staff, they're doing this, but how do we do this on a more regular basis with some of the why and the strategy that will go beyond that piece of that?
And is it time to resurrect the Huntley 158 today?
Well, stay tuned.
Okay.
Yes, with a 2.0 with kind of a video podcasty more feel, but yes, that's coming. September is our first time, September, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you for that. We move on to 13, the closing of the meeting, public comments. I don't see anything over there, but I think it's good. And then, so I will make a motion to move into below session at 7:57 PM. As outlined in here, there's, we're going to go over the appointment, employment, discipline, performance, or dismissal of the employee's leave of council, collective negotiating matter, student disciplinary litigation, and discussion of minutes of meeting, lawfully closed at this time. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Murray. And can I roll off?
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Vivin?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Cordiano?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
All right, does that one move up first?
...
We will resume the public session at 8:32 PM. Can I have a call?
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Whitman?
Here.
Mrs. Wiley?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Clogliano?
Here.
Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Criss?
Here.
All right, with that, we will resume. I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting to hold on August 1st at 8:34 PM.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clogliano, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the meeting is adjourned.